Okay, we're ready to begin it. Everybody would please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the April thirteenth regular planning board meeting. Olivia would like to attend it.
Clifford Busco?
Here.
Kristy?
Here.
Joanne Cowl?
Here.
John Horn? Alan Shiner? Sam Spada? Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Okay, did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes from last month? Before you go, I have one, one minor thing. I bet you got auto corrected, Olivia.
Yeah.
You guys want to make sure your mic poses are on.
Give her something to do while she's watching. And Grace's phone won't be ringing.
Alright, it's on silence. Wouldn't know. I would be silently stemmed. I don't know how to work it, so I wouldn't know.
Just, just push it.
Press the button.
Ellen?
Ellen.
Oh, they'll detect.
Alright. So, anything else? Any other comments on the minutes?
Um, just since I wasn't at the meeting, I didn't watch the videotape. Um, was there a workshop after the meeting?
Yes. Yes.
So that's not included?
That's not included now. I'll take that motion now if there's no other comments.
Go ahead, Art.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes after that.
Now, second.
Paul and Saber?
Aye.
Alright, uh, first order of business is the Railexplorers presentation. If you guys would like to come up, please.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Alex Hatchpool, owner, co-owner of Railexplorers. What we'd like to do, uh, we also have Larry Belker, who's our, our director of operations. We've come up from Rhode Island to be here tonight. Um, Larry's gonna run through some of what we're doing at the station grounds in Phoenicia. Um, and then I'll address the new tour, uh, the idea of going to Mount Trumper. Um, just as a small point of order, I'm, I'm curious as to why there are copies of this floating around in the audience. Um, this was sent confidentially to the board via email. Um, I understand it has then been shared. It does say confidential in the proposal. Uh, we have nothing to hide. I'm just curious as to how that happened.
It's online.
Uh, why is it online? It was posted to the board as a confidential document.
And then to come to public document.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Larry, would you like to speak, um, with the moving information?
Sure. Good evening, board. Um, just wanted to update the, the, the group. Um, we had a permit, a site plan review permit for two thousand and eighteen. Um, and submitted the paperwork to seek a foot plane permit and a building permit, um, back in about a month ago now. Um, so we've commenced to, we received the permits and we've com- commenced to expanding the parking lot. Um, the number one goal in expanding the parking lot is to relieve congestion, um, and add about fifteen parking spaces. Um, the parking spaces are not in, uh, in an attempt to create more business. Uh, we're limited by the amount of tours we can run by the number of bikes that we have. Um, it's purely to relieve congestion and provide more parking to the museum. Um, two temporary structures are going up. One will be an office and storage, and one will be a maintenance shed. These are both temporary structures that are going to re- uh, replace a current, uh, temporary rest, uh, trailer, office trailer, and a shipping container. The goal here is to improve the working conditions of our team as well as provide efficiencies and beautify the area. Because it's very important to the ownership, uh, to beautify the area through landscaping, um, and creating a very safe and comfortable environment for our riders.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Uh, two temporary structures, where are those going?
They're on the property.
But where?
Um, well, it's all drawn up in the, the, the plans that Rick Brooks, we had hired Rick Brooks to do the survey work. And I ha- I do have a copy of that if it's something you'd like to see.
Are they just gonna replace where the, uh, the, uh, the container and the other trailer?
Well, you have the new, the new structures, I know, on the, um, that are moving off as you're looking at off to the right, towards the new exit.
Yep.
And then where are these temporary ones going? I don't remember seeing them labeled.
Well, the new, the new structures are the temporary structures. They're not, they're not, they're not excavate, you know, there's no basements. They are on piers. So they're classified as temporary structures.
Okay.
Not in addition to.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so yeah, that, that's the, the purpose. Um, you know, there's been tree removal. Most of the trees were dead. Uh, we have intent to replant trees to replace the ones that were down. Um, and we're gonna make the area, you know, very attractive and very appealing and very comfortable to the riders.
Any questions?
Okay, um, now I shall discuss, uh, a little about our new Mount Trumper Express. Um, I should point out that the, the reason that we're, that we're investing in this tour, uh, were because of, of comments that were made at the December eleventh town, um, planning meeting, uh, where there were complaints of running past, uh, certain residences on, um, adjacent to Andrews Lane down in Mount Trumper. Um, so we went away after that meeting and, and put our heads together and tried to come up with a solution and, and a product that we could be, uh, comfortable selling, um, and, and presenting to our riders. Um, and the, the document that, uh, has been, um, presented details some of those ideas. Um, this is all very preliminary at this point. Um, nothing, nothing has been set in stone. Uh, we do have the blessing of Ulster County. They, um, they've approved the, the idea of running a shortened tour. So the, the, the basic premise of the tour is to avoid crossing Route twenty-eight, um, on, uh, both Friday and Saturday evenings, uh, so that we can restrict traffic through that residential neighborhood on those two key days per week, um, at, in the evenings, which was a, a major complaint from the previous meeting. The idea of, uh, running from Phoenicia to Mount Trumper, um, it, it solves a number of problems. It means that we don't have to, it means we don't have to cross Route twenty-eight, which was seen as, uh, well, which, which holds up our tours anyway. I mean, there's no, there's no real safety concerns with crossing twenty-eight the way we have been doing it. But primarily it avoids that residential neighborhood, uh, in those evening tours. To make it a tour that we want to, uh, that we're happy with, because of the, because it's not the best, the most beautiful part of our track, we feel like we have to add something to, to make it nice, um, and make it work. Uh, so, you know, it's a, it's a bit of a risk because we don't know what our ridership is gonna, how our ridership is gonna respond. Um, but we're prepared to invest to make something, you know, make a, a nice area out of the Mount Trumper station that is being renovated, uh, in a very minimal way. I mean, by renovation, I just mean repainting, uh, the, the surface creek side. We're adding a, a roller door. But from the, from the roadway, you'll just see the thing, that building being better presented. What we also want to do is create a seating area there for our riders when they get off the bikes, while the bikes are being turned around, ready for the return to Phoenicia. There may be, uh, fifty or sixty, or forty or fifty, I think the maximum number is, um, uh, so seating for those, that sort of number of people. Some kind of a, a seating area, whether it's a deck or a, um, a cleared area adjacent to the property. We haven't quite figured out all of those details yet. One of the, one of the things obviously we're very mindful of, uh, in running evening tours, part of railroad safety is that you need a light on the front and rear of the vehicles so that you can see the rear of the bike in front of you and, um, they can stand, and any guides or anybody on the track can see the bikes approaching with a white light on the front. Uh, so we've always had those. Those have always been on our bikes from, from the start. Uh, anytime, um, the bikes are running in darkness, they have those lights. Um, for the Mount Trumper Express, we want to actually add some environmental lighting, um, some, and, and again, this is all very vague at the moment. We don't have a, a set plan. But we have engaged some local, um, artists and lighting designers to work with us to create, you know, interesting ways of featuring the, the, uh, the environment after dark. Be that by, you know, uplighting trees through the forested areas, um, putting, you know, lights along the rails themselves that are, that are visible pretty much only from the track, um, or maybe even some structural elements that the bikes can travel through, all of which would be placed very carefully to avoid, um, you know, causing problems with the, uh, traffic on Route twenty-eight. You know, I don't, I don't see any of this, uh, environmental lighting to be, um, any, any different to, uh, a holiday decoration on somebody's house. Um, I don't see it being, um, you know, it's not, by any means not a light show. It's just tasteful, uh, lighting of the environment, so it can be appreciated as we go through traveling after dark. Um, I'd like to look out for questions.
So the lighting will be, um, like throughout the entire course, you're saying, from, from beginning to end, or just in the, just at the Mount Trumper area, or?
Um, so, it's two miles of track. Um, we don't have the money to, to light two miles of track. There is only power available at Phoenicia Station and at Mount Trumper Station. So the, anything that we do between, uh, would be either battery or solar powered. Um, and what we're thinking right now is to locate it, to, to minimize it to, uh, you know, three or four areas that work. So there's patches of darkness, and then you see something ahead that you're approaching, and that's the lit environment that you then travel through. By doing that, we can avoid, um, sections of track that are, um, open to the, the, the direct line of sight for drivers on Route twenty-eight. So we can choose where we're gonna put those things. And we can, you know, allocate our budget more specifically to, uh, you know, certain areas that, that are gonna be most effective.
Is the lighting going to be facing up, down, sideways?
Yes.
Always?
Uh, at this stage, um, it's, it's lighting the environment. So, yeah, if they, if we're lighting a tree, it will be up. If we're lighting a, um, the rail, it will be along the rail. If it's lighting a sculptural element, it might be coming from the sculptural element down into the track. I really don't know at this point.
Cause there's a dark, dark sky consideration in general, that we don't like the sky because of...
So these are, these are solar powered, um, think of Christmas lights. They're, they're not, we're not putting up the big twentieth century fox cams and firing them up into the sky. That's, we, we can't afford that and we can't power that. Um, so this is gonna have, I don't think, any, any impact whatsoever on the night sky.
So a low, low level lighting then?
It'll be environmental lighting, yes.
And those will be off except for the times that you're going to be doing the special tour, or are they going to be always on in the night runs?
They'll be only on for the Mount Trumper Express runs.
But you do have some late runs at six-thirty, I think, on Sundays, all the rest of the days. So that would be coming back after, after dark sometimes, or?
Yes.
And then would you have the lights on there?
No.
No?
There'll be lights on the vehicles themselves for safety, but not, uh, the only, the only tours that will feature the lighting, uh, is the, the environmental lighting is the Mount Trumper Express tour. Um, actually, that reminded me, if I could just talk about schedule for a moment. Um, you know, one of the other, one of the other issues of concern that were raised by residents particularly along, uh, in that section of Andrews Lane, Mount Trumper area, was hours of service and hours of operation. Um, and so by introducing this tour, we have, uh, set up the, you know, through the summer, um, on, on Friday, usually when Fridays and Saturday nights were out, there's a very, very popular tour time. Very popular tours, people would come, they'd ride with us, um, even without the lights. But we would go all the way down to the, to the full four miles of track and come back. By, by restricting everything after the four PM tours on Fridays and Saturdays to not cross Route twenty-eight, um, effectively the last bike going through Mount Trumper will be on the return trip on the four o'clock run, which is probably about five-thirty. So Friday and Saturday nights after five-thirty, there'll be no activity on the track, uh, west of, of Route twenty-eight. Um, that was a, a major concern for residents wanting, um, you know, to have those evenings times back so they could barbecue or enjoy the, the outdoors. So, uh, hopefully that helps. The, yeah, you can, well, on the schedule, it also talks about the, um, the time between these tours. The, the Mount Trumper Express is, uh, it's listed as a two-hour turnaround, but the tour itself will probably be much closer to maybe an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half. So even if we are sending bikes out at ten-thirty PM, you know, they're gonna be back in Phoenicia, um, well before midnight. So can I answer any of your questions?
You're gonna send the last run out at ten-thirty at night?
From Phoenicia, yes.
To Mount Trumper and then back?
Yes.
So they'd be getting back like midnight?
Yes.
So I, I know that the bikes do make some noise and there will be some lights, like bright lights on the bikes. I'm not hundred percent sure from my own memory how close the neighboring houses are. I know that there are houses on that same street where you access the parking lot and the, um, the area of where they get on the bikes and get off the bikes. Are there, there's gonna be some disturbance there?
There is, uh, and there's gonna be some, uh, some late departures from the station, which is part of the reason why we invested this money in redesigning the parking lot. And we've actually cut a new driveway that is, um, beyond those residences on Lower High Street so that exiting cars, uh, from those late tours will be able to pull out and get back onto twenty-eight without going anywhere near those houses. So we're, we're trying very hard to, uh, to mitigate any impacts whatsoever on that neighborhood. And then once you leave the station of Phoenicia, there's really no residences at all between, um, uh, until you get to the other side of Route twenty-eight. There's the campground, there's, um, Sleepy Hollow Campground. There's other houses on the other side of twenty-eight, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Could I say, thank you for the thought that you put into this after the last meeting. Um, you guys clearly put a lot of time on working through things. What, what time is the, uh, the tour before the last one?
It's four PM. Four PM is the last tour that cuts.
No, 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 I'm sorry. The, um, the ten-thirty one, what's the tour before that?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put all my...
I have a question. You said that there are lights on the bikes themselves.
Yes.
And why do you need additional lighting along the track?
Because the lights that are on, think of it as a backlight. It's more for other people to be able to see you. It's not so much illuminating the environment that you're traveling through. Um, so on our, on our other six-thirty tours, if, you know, in, in the summer, those, those six-thirty tours are probably not going to be very dark, at least on the way out. There may be dusk on the way back. Um, and those, those bike lights on the bikes will be on for safety. The idea of the lit environment is to add value to, uh, what is it, you know, even in the daytime is a beautiful stretch of, of rail. But in the evening, you know, all you can really see is the lights in the, on Route twenty-eight. And so we thought to, as I said, to add value, we do some really beautiful, magical, um, environmental lighting.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of it in the reverse. The vehicles coming down Route twenty-eight are going to be able to see your lights on the track.
They are.
They are.
Well, it depends where we place them and how, uh, how impactful that is. I mean, this is not a, as I said, this is not a laser light show. We're not a, a rave here. We're, we're, you know, we're creating, uh, we're, we're, we're creating interest where perhaps it would just be darkness, um, if, if there was no light. But no lasers, no smoke machines.
I have additional questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
You're going to have forty to fifty seats there by the, the station. There's not gonna be any beverages sold. There's not gonna be any food sold. There's not gonna be any campfires.
Uh, if we do fires, it'll be fire pits, just, um, like we do at the Phoenicia Station, so contained within the fire pit. Um, and, you know, our, our managers are very conscious of, uh, you know, changes to fire movements, which we, we follow pretty strictly, obviously.
What about a restaurant?
Uh, there'll be a porter John on site.
So you said no to food and beverages, I understand?
That's correct. Uh, we, you know, we encourage people to bring their own, um, which has always been the case. So, uh, you know, people, people may bring a, a refreshment to, to enjoy that.
You know, for forty years, the county has said no improvement on the Route twenty-eight corridor. That it is the main vein through the Catskills. I feel a little uncomfortable with you, not you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to say you, with the county having a contract with you and money is, is being exchanged and they're allowing this, when so many times before, people came before this board and they said no. I'm, what I'm referring to is the lighting mostly. So, I, I, I'm gonna have to give that some thought. I just wanna bring it out to the public that this is going to be an issue.
Uh, I'm not aware of those previous conversations with the county. I can only say that the county is aware of our ideas and they have, um, given us, given us their support.
How far into the foliage will you be putting these lights?
The ride, only to the edge of our right of way. So the ride, the county right of way extends, uh, I think in some places the furthest it goes is fifty feet either side of the centerline of the track. Um, so if you think of a hundred-foot corridor on, with the railroad in the middle, in some places it's a lot narrower than that. But outside of that area is private property, and so we, we won't be placing anything into, into those areas.
And these would be, um, switched on and off, or?
Uh, the way I imagine it, I mean, that if, if we are running three Mount Trumper Express tours, um, the, uh, the lighting would be triggered by, either by the, the first lead guide, the, the guide who goes out before the tour, um, at, at six-thirty, or we would send out a, a flag car to, to turn them on. And then as soon as the, the last bike on the last tour is through, everything would get shut down.
That's good.
Yeah. Is anything in Phoenicia open at midnight?
A bar?
A bar.
Is the bar open?
It depends.
Depending on how busy.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. So the lighting is only in the stretch for the Mount Trumper run?
Exactly.
So, and in return for, for this, you're, it sounds like you are acknowledging what you heard from the community a few months back and are not having Friday and Saturday, called evening runs beyond where the residential's off.
Absolutely. That's the motivation and this is the...
There's a bit of a win-win here.
Well, we'll see.
And define, um, what do you mean by structures? You said you're gonna put some structures.
Structures, that's a good question. Um, so, one of the ideas that I'm excited about, and again, this is all subject to, subject to budget and, and, um, environmental constraints and, and getting power to it. Um, there's a section that I thought would be really interesting to build some kind of a, um, you know, imagine a, a, like a hula hoop, a big, a big, um, fifteen foot...
Like an alber?
Fifteen foot wide hula hoop.
Yeah.
But a, a, a line of them, um, you know, maybe ten feet apart. And they're, they're either lit or they're emitting light down onto the track. Um, and that creates a, a, a really magical experience as you, as you ride through them, you know, you get this approaching and then traveling through this tunnel of, of light. Where we place that, so that it's not, uh, so that it's effective, um, where we can get power to it, where it, it, I mean, that's a, that's a big investment. So where we get the most bang for that buck. And where it's shielded from Route twenty-eight is a question I haven't quite got the answer to yet. But, um, that's one of the issues. The other would be, um, just the trees themselves, you know, the, the woodland becomes a structure when you, when you light it a certain way. It's lighting design and talk that this guy has been, um, to me about, which I'm, I'm really excited about. You know, I think it's gonna be amazing.
I'm just hoping that it won't be a distraction to people who are driving.
Yeah, I think the details are really important on that part of it.
Yeah.
I think it could, it's, it sounds like a neat idea and I get the appeal of, as a rider. Um, but I think where, the specific placement of that is gonna be very important.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I keep coming back to, um, architectural lighting on homes, uh, in people's gardens. This is not a light show. This is, uh, it's environmental light.
Also, there is a, um, a law or whatever you wanna call it. You can't have any kind of flashing light on twenty-eight for any reason. So those lights are not gonna be like flashing or twinkling or, you know, okay.
Now, the seating is gonna be behind the station?
Behind and on the, um, the Phoenicia side of the, the station. Where the, where that big long porch over, overhang is. Um, we're hoping to clean up, um, all of the, the trash and debris that has been stored behind the station building, clear out some of the invasive species that have started to encroach into that, the Japanese knotweed, the, the other, and do some, you know, do some tasteful plantings and landscaping and have our seating area there. And, and make a, a nice, even, safe surface.
I was down there today. There's not a lot of room between the station and the knotweed before it drops off the bank.
Right. So we had been exploring the idea of putting a, uh, uh, building a deck that extends slightly out over that edge and, and... and gives us some seating out beyond the edge of where the, as you said, the knotweed is. Whether we can, we have a call into the DEP to see what that would mean because there are setbacks involved. That station building is very close to the edge of the DEP property. So that, you know, that idea might disappear and we'll have more seating on the left side of the building.
Do you operate in any weather or is there a cutoff in a certain amount of rain?
Any weather.
Yes, there's a cutoff after a certain amount of rain and if there's any kind of lightning or thunder. You know, sometimes we get caught out and then we have evacuation plans to get our riders off the track and back to Phoenisha. But usually, we're pretty good at predicting where the storm's going to go and what the rain's going to do.
So I mean, you've been operating a while, so have you noticed any times when that's been an issue?
Well, it's Catskill Mountains, so if you don't like the weather, you know, just wait. You know, the summer storm, you've watched them approaching and then they get caught up in the mountains. I mean, Pace is here, she's become an expert at reading the radar maps. And we subscribe to a bunch of pretty good and pretty reliable sources. But, you know, we are on the side of caution. But we do go out in the rain. It's actually really beautiful.
So is there a hazard that the rail bikes get wet?
The one, again, in our safety briefings prior to every tour that we give to every rider, if the rails are wet, we advise them that that can, that can cause the bikes to slip if the brakes are applied because you'll slide on the tracks. So give yourself extra room if you're coming into, you know, if you're coming up to where the bikes are stopped on this side of Route 28, give yourself some extra room to slow down. But that's pretty much it. There's no other real danger involved.
Do you have electric motors, think that?
They do.
Are there electrocution hazards?
No, no. The motors are, they're a modified e-bike motor, so they're designed for all weather. And everything's sealed. The battery units are all sealed in a, you know, in a great little case and everything's protected. So no, although now that you've said it, I'm going to have to make sure. But no, there's no danger. And the voltage is very low anyway, so.
I just have concerns about the last ride. It just seems late to me. And I try and balance everything. You know, I view everything as a business owner in the area and a homeowner in the area. And I don't think I would like that if it were near my house and people driving around.
Well, that's why we're staying on the other side of 28, but not near any houses.
The entrance is in a neighborhood.
Oh, well, we've cut a new, I understand your concern. And we'll do everything we can to make sure those, I mean, you know, right now, it's on schedule. It's not published yet. If, if this tour itself doesn't sell the way our previous tours have with the, you know, the magic of the woods after you cross 28, then we won't be running three of them. There's no reason to. So it's all as yet unknown. We're trying to present what to us will be best-case scenario, but perhaps to you will be worst-case scenario.
So are you saying then that you will promote the tours before they're actually going to be functional, which could be in the process of constructing and doing all these renovations to the depot? But before that, you'll see how well it sells?
No, the renovations to the depot are happening right now. We're hoping to have those completed before our opening day at the end of April. These tours are not set to launch until mid-June, the Express tours. Whether the kind of ideas that I've been talking about tonight are ready to execute by mid-June, I don't know yet. But yes, the, I mean, the plan would be to promote them in the same way that we promote all of our tours preseason and try and get pre-sales so that then when they do launch, we have riders. But the renovations, we're hoping will be completely finished by opening day. Certainly, gosh, if they're not finished by mid-June, then we're in trouble.
The seating in the deck is going to be for your passengers?
Yes.
And not people coming in?
You know, we've done this in our other locations. We have set up turnaround areas with, you know, with Adirondack chairs and occasionally we'll bring a tour in and there's a couple of fishermen sitting on the Adirondack chairs. That's fine. We can't, I mean, it's, Mount Trumper Station is a popular spot for people to come through. And, you know, if we're improving sight and providing, like, we're not going to bring in the seating when it's not 6:30 on Friday. That's just, it's going to be there all the time. So, you know, it's not, we have no intention of chaining it off or fencing it off or, you know, electrifying it or anything like that.
I'm just trying to visualize what the maximum capacity could be. You know, you're saying fifty seats, I figure fifty people, and could it be a hundred and fifty?
Well, we're limited by the number of seats on our vehicles. So the fleet size is the maximum capacity per tour is what? Forty-six people, forty-six riders is the sum total of the bums on seats that we can get from Phoenisha to Mount Trumper on any one tour. So we're not busing anybody in addition to that. That's it.
Thank you.
So it's just seating and fire pits are what you're talking about there?
Seating, fire pits, maybe some cafe lights to make the, you know, there's some really nice antique station lights that are still there from when that station was active. We have approached an electrician to see if we can reactivate those lights. So there'll be some really nice environmental, again, environmental lighting that fits into the architecture of the place and is not, you know...
No events or anything at that location?
I'm sorry?
No entertainment or anything of that nature at that location? Just literally tour people coming, maybe some random people that showed up and then tour people leaving, just relaxing for a little bit.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And that's, that's very much how our tours run every day. You take people out, they have to get off the bikes so that we can turn them around. So we build a nice place for them to sit, have a cup of coffee, have a glass of water or whatever, turn all the bikes around, which usually takes twenty or thirty minutes. Then we invite them all to get back on and they return to the origin. We're doing exactly the same thing at Mount Trumper. Yeah, it's not a venue.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any more questions for them?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just a little concerned about the late night of the tour.
Yeah, that's like, that's very late. I can't imagine anybody wanting to go out that time.
Will you let some people speak, some of the residents?
Well, there's not a public hearing.
But there will be no public...
Yeah, if anybody would like to speak that lives in the area, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Molly Holm and I live on Angelane Road. There's a lot of people here from Angelane Road and Mount Pleasant Road and some people from 28. And I think everyone has concerns. I find this whole idea that this would be allowed to go through very upsetting. Being from Angelane Road, from what I've read in their report, and I don't think he really mentioned a lot that's in here. When I first read it, I thought, oh, great, I'll have one less run twice a week. And then I thought, but I don't want them to do this to 28. You know, I keep hearing them talk about their riders and making their riders happy. I don't hear any talk about us who live here and the taxpayers. Some of us like the beauty of 28. We like seeing the sunset over the mountain. We like the quiet. It's getting more and more crowded and there's very few spaces on 28 between, you know, right in our immediate area where it's not built up. I just don't hear enough about how we might feel as taxpayers here. So I'm not going to take long. I just wrote some bullet points and then I just want to speak for a minute. I'm a little upset with the county too. And I've been trying to reach someone from the county to find out how they can just get permission for things without checking with the town. So driver safety. Last year, people did call and complain. Sarah stated it at that fall meeting, that people called and complained that the lights from the bikes were blinding them. They were distracting them. This idea of having the bikes at night and other light, when you read their plan, they're talking about an immersive experience for their riders, including with the audio headsets. Maybe they're not going to do that. So I can't imagine seeing colored lights. You're going to be able to see them no matter what, even if they're a little bit behind the trees. But there were complaints. So there is reason to be concerned that that can be a safety hazard. The schedule, they've stated before and in this plan that they can have as many runs as they want, that in their lease with the county, there were no restrictions put. So I think last year, they got in trouble for doing night runs and they had to stop. So usually, the last run on Andrew Lane Road should be the one that is 6:30 and then it's like 7:30, quarter to eight is the last one. So when they talk about doing less runs on Andrew Lane Road, it's only two. It's only the one that they would be doing normally at like six o'clock. So there's one less run on Friday and one less run on Saturday. But I know that they like doing night runs on holidays. That's what they claimed in the fall. So although they don't state it, what would stop them from adding more night runs besides just Friday and Saturday? They've already stated they have the ability to do whatever runs they want. Why wouldn't they do them on holidays? I can almost guarantee that they will. Why wouldn't they add them more during the week? And the reason that they added more runs in the fall last year, we always had two days off a week in the fall and two days off in the spring. Last year, in the fall, they did seven months, seven days a week straight through, was because of demand. So if they have the demand and people want the reservations to go, then they're going to give that to them. What would stop them from adding more runs? Does the town have any ability or control over that? And I agree that the last run at 10:30 would be almost midnight that it would be pulling in. And there are two houses across from the Mount Trumper Depot and they should matter, you know? Those houses are looking right over there. I think the visual impact on Mount Trumper Depot is going to be a lot. According to their plan, they're talking about fences. Are they going to do a fence on the Route 28 side? The fire pits, they talk about a light show of twinkling lights in the trees, porta-potties. And Adirondack chairs are huge. Forty to fifty Adirondack chairs is a lot. And yet, there's nothing there. It's this tiny little space. So there's no way, it's not going to be a huge visual impact for those of us in the neighborhood and driving by. What if we like it looking peaceful and quiet? Rail bikes have already had a huge impact in our area. So now they're looking to create an even bigger footprint. And I'm like, who owns that land? I guess the county does, so I'm not sure what is involved in their lease. I also feel like in their lease, the original lease, they're not supposed to have any activity or any noise after, before 7:00 a.m. and after 9:00 p.m. That's in their lease. So I don't even know how they've been able to do night runs or would consider going after nine unless the county has given them an exemption. So I would go back and read their original lease and see, because they may be breaking their lease by going and making noise and activities after nine. Will they serve alcoholic drinks? So in their plan, they're talking about serving drinks and snacks. Now he's not mentioning it. So maybe they changed their mind, but how do we know they won't then decide to do that? Would they be serving alcohol drinks if they were? And I also feel like this is the last year of their contract. We all know, most likely, they're going to get another five-year contract. I know that tourism is good for the area. But it doesn't make sense to me that we would allow them to do such a major renovation in the last year of their contract. It would make sense to see if it's going to be renewed. They're talking about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar project. That's a lot of money. That implies a lot going on. Again, I would wonder, has the DEP, the DEC and the DOT been notified for safety for the road? And I always come back to what rights do the town have versus the county? So I feel a little helpless if this is coming from the county. And what right does the town board have? What does, what rights do Shandaken have? And what rights as residents do we have to care about our environment? Route 28 is a beautiful highway. It's our highway. We love it. We love the night sky. We love the quiet at night. The schedule of rail bikes is relentless, starting in the summer, going all the way through the end of fall. It's seven days a week, nonstop. And I feel like they've had enough impact already. They're making a very big profit. They're not doing more to help the neighbors in Angelane Road, make more of a fence, do other things. And I just wonder, when is it enough? And when do the rights of the homeowners here come into play? So I feel like they've been given a lot. I feel like this is way too much to ask and I think that you should think about our needs as well. Thank you.
Is there somebody else that would like to speak from the neighborhood?
Hi, I'm Susan Wayman. I live on Forty Andrew Lane. And there's nothing addressing the loudness of the bikes, number one. Number two, Molly has a privacy fence. I have nothing. I have the same backyard. It does buffer a little tiny bit of the sound, but to not be able to see them would be a plus for me. That's basically all I have to say because Molly said it all. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Margulison. I actually live on Woodland Valley Road. And so I'm not going to be directly affected by this, but I am. I'm very concerned. It actually feels almost like some kind of a Playland ride or something, you know, where you're going to have these nice hoops, hula hoops with everyone to go through. They're going to have seating for, I don't even understand really why they need this kind of big seating. I feel like it's a big, a big palaver for a town that, see, I actually didn't know that Ulster County gave permission for this. So there's a lot I don't know about this. I'm just coming from the position of fearing what can happen to this town as you keep bringing in more and more people. There will be tourism. They already have their rail explorers. Why do they need it to be a larger and larger event? I mean, I know they have something in Las Vegas, they have some, they're used to having a big, they're used to having, you know, a big service, a big, I don't know what to call it. But I just feel like, I wonder, what power do we have to say, no, we don't have environmental lighting. The stars are our environmental lighting. What do you need environmental lighting? A lot of the things he was saying, I was just, and it's really no offense to him, but I feel like it's getting, it's just the largeness of it. You know, and then these nighttime things. And what are they going to do hanging out at that station? What do you, why do they need to, it's two miles away from Phoenisha, I don't understand. So they turn around the thing and they go back. But why have a big, you know, all these chairs? What about the wildlife? I know a lot of people here want to talk about that too. This is part of what makes Phoenisha so special and Shandaken is the forever wildland, what we do to protect this county. Why we're, most of us are here are because of this. So we need to have this in perspective. And yes, okay, have some of this rail explorer ride, but why make it such a big deal?
I also live in Woodland Valley and I think sometimes the last consideration here, of course, humans, very important, but I don't think this is going to be good for wildlife. There's a lot of waterfowl, eagles' nests down there. There's a lot of um, waterfowl, eagles nest down there. I value our dark sky and this, to have lights, more lights, we already have the lights from traffic. I think this is not going to be good for wildlife and um, I don't know why it's necessary to expand this project. I think as it is, they're making a huge profit. I don't know why we have to make it bigger. I value the dark sky. We need our dark sky.
Yes. Um, all of these comments are saying that this is something new. This is a reaction to uh, concerns from Andrew Lane. We're not adding new tours, we're shortening existing tours that used to run through that neighborhood. We're not expanding the footprint other than putting chairs and a few pieces of, of things down by Tremper Road and putting lights on. The noise was there from the previous tours.
Please address the board.
Sorry. Um, this, these are not new tours. These are tours that are replacing previous tours because there were complaints.
I have a question for you, before you sit down please. I'm up. That reminded me, on Andrew's Lane, you guys did talk about doing some sort of fencing. Was any more discussion had about that?
Uh, vegetation, yes. Um, we've actually planted some test uh, sections of um, I don't know what the technical name is, but it's a, it's a
Bowley.
Thick hedge type grass that grows very high. Um, people use it on roadways and to, to buffer noise. We have some small sections of that that we're testing. If that's successful, we will roll that out wherever it's needed. Um, and we're also continuing to look at ways of um, uh, you know, we've, last time I mentioned, in terms of the noise, replacing all of the rear wheels with these aluminum framed um, urethane wheels. That's a project that is, excuse me, in process. Some of those wheels haven't arrived yet from overseas. As soon as they do, they'll be rolled out into the rest of the fleet. Um, uh, I, I think that will make some impact. Um, and we are still looking at um, physical track improvements, you know, going out and tightening bolts and, and replacing tires to, uh, to re-level the track so that the, the joints are better aligned to minimize the clack of the, the wheels going across them. So all of that work is, is progressing as, uh, as we, excuse me again, as we described in December.
So you had said that this was just to replace the existing runs, but the late ten thirty run, you had that before.
We, we did do, and you know, we weren't, um, we, we'd had, uh, in past summers, we have run later tours. Um, I don't think it was exactly at ten thirty because the, the timing of the new schedule is different. Um, the reason we stopped doing that was not because we got in trouble and not because we were chastised, it was because there were complaints from the neighborhood and so we cut down these tours, we shut them off. Okay? So, you know, those tours were, were stopped. This is a way to um, address that issue and, and move forward.
Guess I'd like to see where the lighting is going to go as far as distracting drivers on 28.
That seems to be the issue.
Yeah.
I don't want to ruin the car to coming up into the Catskills with lighting. That's been an issue for every business for a long time. So you're going to have to give us some serious details on that.
As, as they, as that plan solidifies, we'll, um, we'll keep you in the loop.
Is there any chance of cutting out that last run? Because that seems to be a big issue.
The ten thirty?
Yeah.
As I said, if, um, if the tour doesn't receive the, um, the attention that we, uh, you know, it's completely unknown. Um, right now it's on the schedule so that we can talk about it. If it, uh, yes, there is a chance that we will cut it out, but right now it's on the schedule.
Because like, like I said, nothing goes on at that hour in, in this neighborhood in Phoenicia. And, and it would be an unfamiliar disturbance, actually. Um, unfamiliar traffic, familiar noise and lights and, and that, that's why it's a big deal to me.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Yes, Rob.
I got a bunch of questions. The first one is, you have an application. First of all, I want to clarify too, that there's, it is not too temporary structure for the Phoenicia location. One structure is permanent. It has to be pier and anchored. It is a twenty by twenty building. It is not a, they're saying temporary structure because it's pre-manufactured or pre-fab structure. We know the local contractor. So does it need a building inspection? Probably should have a quick one, but I'm sure it's going to be up to snuff as far as building. But required it to anchor and because it's a flood plain. Uh, so that makes it permanent structure. It's not a temporary structure, so I wish that was not a big thing. Uh, second of all, the, the parking lot expansion in Phoenicia, the proposal for Mount Tremper, these are like two separate things. I think you actually have three different things going on here. I think there needs to be a site plan review for the Phoenicia location. There needs to be a site plan review for the location in Mount Tremper and along the tracks, as you just pointed out. Where are the lights going? What kind of lights? Where are they facing? What, you know, you can't just say, we're going to string Christmas lights. We don't know. Um, you need more specifics and you're asking for them. So those things all come to you in a site plan review. And I'm going to tell you right off the bat, the proposal for the deck, that ain't, that's not going to happen. That is just my
Is that in the flood plain?
Flood plain management, you are. One, you're not cancel leering over the stream, you're not posting anything over the stream. And to think that you're going to put piers between that building and the stream bank, you're going to do just nothing but diminish that stream bank more and actually put the building at risk by diminishing that, or diminishing that, that street. Because that's an erosion point back there, I know that's
For you people don't know, what does the flood plain administrate?
So the deck is going to be, that's, it's not going to stop maybe putting the parking lot in there, but I think their parking lot is actually out of the flood plain because it stops at just about the railroad tracks.
But you have to remember that the planning board has limited authority over this county track.
Okay, but it's a county property, but everything they do to operate is provided by this board. Their, their special permit only, only talks about their operations. The site plan is what they're doing in our community. And I'm going to tell you, you know as well as I do, that the plant, the county planning department did not say, you got a permission, our permission to go full bore at this thing. They said, we'll give you support as much as we can. But they're not going to go against what the regulations of the town. So it's up on you and I really think this needs a full blown review because we've got a lot of people here with a lot of questions that are not getting answered and they're kind of vaguely answered by my opinions.
Molly, may I answer your question for you, please?
Yeah.
Sure. You referred to the county. Let me just tell you how the process works. It comes to the planning board for us. We refer it to the county as a referral. They can approve it, they can approve it with modifications or they can deny it. That's not etched in stone, any of those. We have the right as the town, if we have a majority plus one vote, we can overrun the county.
Even in the case of the railroad use? And I mean that in a very friendly way.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. This is a unique situation because the county owns the property.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
This is, this is what I was saying before. I feel a little uncomfortable because there's a lease between the applicant and the county, so there's money changing hands and the county's going to give us a referral. I, you know, I, I see that being an issue.
I, I wanted to talk to the county, particularly Dennis Doyle, but I do believe that they are really totally for Rail Explorers. So I felt like I don't have a neutral place to go with the county, which is why I've been trying to reach someone who's not in the Ulster County Planning Board. Because I feel like the concerns seem to be heard, that the residents maybe are not getting a fair shade.
Molly, we're here for that.
Okay.
We're here to have to hear your concerns. We will present the, the concerns to the, to the county planning board when we refer it to them. You'll come back and we could also send it back to them again. You know, so you do have, I don't want to say this, but you do have us up here to protect you. That's what we have when we, we do that, we take that seriously.
So, so this meeting is really just to review their operation, their hours of operation. So you're, you're essentially reviewing what the town has allowed for them to do under special permit, which you guys can amend at any moment in time as, that's why it's called a special permit.
It's a presentation.
Yeah, I'm saying that this is what we're doing, but again, the, the physicality of it and it's being piecemeal too now, because I just learned about the deck yesterday and I've already done the stuff and given the permit for that. And again, I was
I just learned about the deck tonight.
It's like coming, coming fast and furious and I know you want to open your money, but this really should have started back in the
Well, it says here, it says, "Presentation by the Rail Explorers on our agenda." So it's a presentation.
Yes.
But then you would expect the site plan review of what's going to happen at the Mount Tremper location?
Well, we're going to discuss that.
Okay.
You know, we, we, we're getting a presentation tonight and we'll decide which way we want to pursue it.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I just, my name's Hillary Leitner.
I'm sorry, could you?
My name is Hillary Leitner and I was just um, a little concerned about the forty-six chairs at night and that's after the run, so if it's potentially midnight and he, he encourages people to come and bring drinks or food or snack, how long can they stay? Can they stay until four in the morning or what?
Well, he said it takes forty minutes to turn the cars. Forty minutes.
So they can only stay on the Adirondack chairs outside?
He said they were cut, they were arriving, sitting down while they turned the chairs.
Chairs around and then
So is that true? They only stay forty minutes after the ride?
We're taking them back to Phoenicia on the same rail line that they go to the station on.
Okay, so they
They don't have a number layout unless they want to walk through the car.
Okay. And you encourage alcohol beverages or do you encourage? Because his other, the other um, rail trails that he has, um, in, I think Las Vegas and Rhode Island, they serve um, Bloody Marys and Mimosas and stuff like that. So I'm just
As you heard, I asked if they were going to be serving beverages
Is there a way of controlling that? I mean, he changes his mind.
Yes, there is a way to control it. If we were to approve this, there would be a site plan review and a site plan, all of this is spelled out. If they breach the contract, you know, the site plan contract, then the inspector goes there and gives them service.
I'm also just confused why we would need this, you know, I mean, he said it's not an extra footprint, but what, what does the town get from this? I mean, we already have the
Everybody has a constitutional right.
No, I know, I know, but every, he's already has the daytime stuff. Why, why extend it to the evening hours and the lights and stuff? It, it's already bringing in
They were trying to work with us after the last meeting to shorten the run, not to disturb the neighbors down the line. And that's what we're trying to do.
And he can't do that during the day.
They came out of their way graciously to try to work through this with us.
And they can't do that during the day and it's
Well, we were concerned that they were crossing 28 in the dark. That was a big concern. So they're trying now to enhance their ride because they have shortened it. They've cut it in half, so they want to enhance the atmosphere, if you want to call it that, or the ambiance of the ride at night by putting in these lights and hoops and whatever.
They've come forward with good suggestions compared to, you know, what they were dealing with before. So we're heading in the right direction.
I hope so.
Making for the business, but not for the residents.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, that's my biggest
You know?
And I, money, but the people actually send, pay taxes, volunteers, people that have been part of this community are suffering.
But they are employing people from the community. You have to remember that too.
You're taxpayers. This is, it's so loud. You can, you're welcome to come and set out a party while they go pedaling by. It's, it's, it's noise pollution. You really should all go, we have a backyard, we can invite you to. You really ought to experience it before you make their permit any bigger. For And is there any
I'm sure we'll hear from you again.
Is there any limit on the number of cars they can run? Because I don't see anywhere where there's a limit on that.
Well, they gave a figure tonight for the amount of cars they're going to go, run. Is that increased from what you've been doing in the past? Same amount of cars, right? Just shorten the distance.
But is there something in the contract stating that they can't add anymore? I'm talking at the day runs.
Well, all of these things come through when you do a site plan review. The lighting comes through, the sound comes, the noise comes through, the parking comes through. Every, every one of these concerns that you people are addressing are good, solid concerns. We want to keep our community a nice place. They'll have to answer these questions in the site plan and we'll work through it at that point.
And vegetation? How long is it going to take to grow? I mean, how many years am I going to have to listen to this? I work full-time. I'm tired. I want to come home, sit in my backyard. I can't. I can in the middle of the winter, but who wants to sit out there? And they, it's
We're here, what we're here to do is mediate this whole thing. We're here to work it out, make sure it fits into our law, that nobody's doing anything against the law. We want to help you as neighbors, we want to help you as businessmen. And there's a way to do this. It's just, you just have to work through the issues. To be quite frank with you, until you started speaking, I didn't know half these issues. Now I do. I have more to consider. I have what they said this evening to consider, I have what you said to consider, and these are all things that we'll discuss as a board. No one person up here makes the decision.
Well, I definitely would like to request the fence. Molly has a fence. I don't know why they can't extend it. That's my problem.
I'm on Mount Pleasant Road and it's, and I appreciate what you said, Art, because I get it, you're trying to make sure that everybody ends up happy, but I invite all of you, please, to come right to my house on one seventy-two. You helped me with my house years ago. My parents owned the property since nineteen eighty-four. It is horrific. My dogs bark like crazy and I'm sorry, but they go till ten thirty at night. I mean, I'm going to bed at nine o'clock at night and my dogs are barking because you hear woo-woo, woo. People are partying out on the trail. It's not, it's not calm and enjoyable and I, I really do mean it, that please come to my property at any time to hear it because the reason everybody's complaining is because it is so hard to live right by it. I came to the Catskills because my parents were here and it's beautiful and we're neighbors and we all on our street on Mount Pleasant Road, because I, I heard a lot of Andrew Lane tonight. Mount Pleasant Road, we're not happy folks either, frustrating. And I don't want to hear them called environmental lights because that goes against everything I believe about our beautiful environment here with our animals. I don't want to hear environmental lights because that's just
And so the chairman brought that up before that. We need more information on that.
Yeah, no Christmas lights. If you want Christmas lights, come see my house.
Who's sending emails?
The Christmas one?
Yeah. Please, please, no cross conversations. Thank you.
All right, um, I think we're going to move on from this topic for now. There will be more discussion of this. One quick question.
Did he put some rubber around the tires originally?
He said he's going, they're in the process of it.
That was supposed to be done four years ago, when he first started, he said, how do you believe that? And he says, and we couldn't do what he says.
He said, he said they've begun the process. They're waiting for more
That was the original, that was the original plan and that was, that was never done. I mean
Bill, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
One quick thing. You had three emails from people that couldn't come to the meeting that had comment?
Sure.
You could read them.
Do you mind? Do you want me to read them?
No, unless you'd like to.
From the Phoenicia Bell, Tom and Dana Frazier. Hi Olivia, as residents of Lower High Street living near the Rail Road Museum and Rail Explorers Depot, we would like to voice our support for the proposed addition to the Rail Explorers evening runs to Mount Pleasant. We had no problem with REX, that's what they're calling the shortened tour, these past few years and view them, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is Rail Explorers. We have no problem with REX these last few years and view them to have been an asset to the community. They are very conscientious about being good neighbors, not only in the running of their They are very conscientious about being good neighbors, not only in the running of their business, but also in the tidying up of the landscape here on Lower High. We welcome this exciting addition to their schedule and give them our ongoing support for their next five years. Thanks, Tom and Dana Fraser. Alan Fleegal. Hi, Olivia. We cannot make the meeting tonight, so we are writing this letter. We live directly across the street from the Rail Explorers. Lynn and I like the Rail Explorers, and we'd like to give our support to them. I had some problem with midnight rides, but it's only on Friday and Saturday, not every summer night. That's okay. They are good neighbors and have good judgment. If you require more information, please contact us. Lynn and Alan Fleegal, seventy-three Lower High Street. Don Marvella Casali, apologize if I mispronounced that. Hi, Olivia. As residents of Lower High Street, living near... As residents of Lower High Street, living near the Rail Road Museum and Rail Explorers Depot, we would like to voice our support for the proposed addition to the Rail Explorers evening runs to Mount Pleasant. We've had no problem with REX these last few years and view them to have been an asset to the community. They are very conscient, it's different at the end. They are very conscientious about being good neighbors, not only in the running of their business, it's different at the end, but also in the tidying up of the landscape here on Lower High. We are very pleased with the investment the Rail Explorers have made in our community, especially the landscaping and maintenance of what were the longest, of what were for the longest time distressed properties. We welcome this exciting addition to their schedule and give them our ongoing support for the next five years.
Thank you, folks.
This is to set the public hearing? That's all this?
Dirt, no, dirt, dirt.
His submission to the DBA. So this is a follow-up from two weeks ago. You had made some...
Could everyone in the back quiet down?
You had made some requests, and I just want to follow up on some of those. So I'm scheduled to attend the zoning board of appeal meeting a week from today to request my change of use variance for renovating my garage. And I have a couple of questions. Two weeks ago, Cliff, you suggested that I have rigid board insulation horizontally installed around the perimeter of the building to create a barrier against frost heave.
Again, this is a, this is a building.
Excuse me?
That's a conversation you have to have with the building department, but yes.
Yes, yes. So I spoke to my excavator about it, and it's a little bit of a problem in the back because the mountain goes straight up behind the building, but he thinks he can manage it with some difficulty.
We have no control over this. This is between you and your architect.
That was, that was an offhand comment.
Oh, it was? Okay.
That's not a, that's not a planning word, no.
It's not? Okay, so then who do I address it to?
Your builder, your architect, whoever's drawing your plans for this project?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't...
Building inspector.
The building inspector. Okay, I don't have an architect. Okay. And the other question was, so is, maybe these are all questions for the building inspector. I would like to know what the regulations are that I need to know about regarding installing either a spiral staircase or a wooden staircase.
Once again, building, building.
Building inspector, okay. And how many inspections will I be required to have?
Building inspector.
Okay, so there is no building...
We care about where it is on the property.
Yeah, you're going to the zoning board for that variance from your sideline, if I remember correctly. You're only four feet.
Yes.
That's what you're going to the zoning board for.
Right.
You're going for an area variance.
Right, I understand that. So since there is no building inspector right now, to whom...
We have a building inspector.
You do?
Yes. She just, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. So I guess that's it, then. I'll...
You got off easy.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that, and, because I do have questions about it. There's some problems with the insulation because of the exterior staircase.
That's all between you and your depression that draws your plans.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Are we going to set a public hearing for that? Jennings subdivision? Yes, please.
Hi, Lord. Vic Fairburn is my name, land surveyor, Mark Bill. So Jennings family, it's a, they're both of the trust. I think they're three trustees. They'd like to split off or self-divide three point zero one acres on Crookshank Road from a total of thirty-seven point seven nine acres. It's on the lower side, if you're familiar with Crookshank Road, the lower side of the stream side of Crookshank, Eesopis Creek. If you look on the Ulster County website, they can bring up the...
Where is this?
Could I?
Is there a plan in the set?
No, they're right there.
There's an application, there's no plan.
That's for that application as well. This too?
I live on Crookshank.
You do?
Right, but how can they be only a thousand feet from Lost Clove Road? That's what I'm curious to see.
Is this us two? This is you?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Add this, so you, where the floodway is relative to where, the part of the property is the flood zone, but it doesn't come off. This is the area. If you look at my map, it shows the stream line. Sorry, here's the open field. You can see the tree lines there. And this is, so this is the whole property.
Oh, so it's up by the turnaround, up here, because the house is over here.
A big house is over here.
It's over here, right, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. This is the whole property. Anywhere, you want to divide it at the road?
Nope. Well, yeah, the road, the centerline is a road, but only three acres right in the center.
So this is where it drops off?
It drops off here. Yes.
And is it R three, what's the zoning there?
One point five.
One point five, yeah.
Funny though.
Yeah, that's funny. I didn't realize that property went all the way in like that. It drops off here. This drops off. It's a big drop-off. Right where this turnaround is, this property goes down. They're going to use this to build?
Yeah, well, that's the...
They have it steep there? Have they met with an engineer about septic?
Rex Sanford is hopefully going to have the soil stoned before the next meeting. So, yeah, he was hoping to get out there yesterday and just at least take a quick look at it. So I told him I was coming here, but he wasn't able to get out there.
Steve, we need to know there's a viable septic site.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but... I can't imagine a good perp, the river being over here.
Yeah, it's right here.
Do you want to, is this Jennings place?
Who?
Jennings place?
Jennings, yeah, at the end of the road. And they're starting for the turnaround.
It's R one and a half, I think.
It's R one and a half? Yeah, R one, they're splitting off three acres. Yeah, as long as there's nothing here at the septic, I don't see any.
Thirty-seven point seven nine.
They have a big pond.
Is that water, those trees?
Yeah, they have a big pond.
That's a pond. So that's going to stay with the other piece of property?
So I'm just curious. You could actually build a residence without self-dividing.
No, well, you can for a door.
Oh, it's going to be a separate family?
They want to be able to sell it.
I'm not sure, to be honest. I've been dealing with Rosemary and John Jennings. They're, they're the people who live there, and they put the property in the three, their children, especially. That's trustees, but I'm not sure if John and Rosemary are going to build one of those lot or if they're just going to sell it.
Okay, so it's a family issue then? You're not the owner?
Right.
Well, maybe if we get to see if they do the perp test, and Rex Sanford gets down there, we'll see. But I think we're going to need more elevations here, because I know that property drops off from the way...
Elevation, contour, to determine if the driveway would be too steep to get in.
Right, I mean, how would you get in there?
You know, one thing I was looking at, I haven't asked Jennings this yet, I showed that grass road beyond the turnaround that, in my opinion, was the best way to get down in there.
Oh, this one here?
They, they didn't, yeah. They didn't want to bring that or include that part of the property and try to convince someone to add that to the three acres, but they didn't want to risk someone building right in front of that big house up there.
Yeah, because they have a big house up there.
If, if they're okay with it, would you allow, because they meet the minimum road runs required, would you allow them to use that road for access to the lot?
Well, they would have to give with the lot, if they sell it the right away with that.
Because they would meet the minimum road runs requirement.
Right.
Existing mileage. But, but again, I haven't asked them that. I really think that's what they should do because of, you know, it is a little bit of a drop-off there.
It is, yeah.
USGS contours.
Oh, I'm looking at it backwards. I see. I know, our map...
Right here, it drops off. Right here with this turnaround, if they keep all the dumpsters there.
So this is, you're saying to use this grass road?
Use this grass road to go in, because it drops off here.
Are there any buildings on the rest of the property?
Yeah, huge, huge old...
It was a dance studio, and it was a camp, Camp Deek.
Camp who?
Deek.
Is this steep too here? Could it come in that way?
You have to, you'll have to look down.
Yeah, and there's that ditch, there's a drainage ditch there, and, but once they're beyond, over that, they could get down in.
This is why we like the contour lines.
For USGS contours, okay?
Yeah.
Because they're all in twenty-foot intervals. My guess is there's only going to be about one interval, one line through there. Once you get down to that bank, it's almost flat all the way through.
Yeah, down in the, in the field.
What are we, what is it, ten foot? What do we usually ask for?
Unless you're familiar with some data that's out there, existing contours, then maybe there is that.
Well, see if you can talk to them about the right of way. I think it would be better for everybody.
If we can, if they're willing, can we, we could show that on the map, and do we, could we avoid the contours doing, putting those contours in?
I don't know, what do you think?
We usually acquire it. I mean, it's, I know there are a lot of work.
Because this little grass road you put in, this is like right in front of where the big house is.
That's why they didn't want to extend the property, or they didn't want someone building right there.
But they have to realize that they will have traffic then, going right in front of their...
I guess that's not as bad as something built over there. Yeah, probably aren't going to go for it.
You don't think so?
I don't know, they were really close to someone building. I don't know. I'll try.
I'll see what they say. Explain it to them.
Rex already came to us, and he was explaining that he was going to do the septic on this. He had come early, am I correct?
Rex?
Yeah.
He was here?
No, he came earlier, and he said that he couldn't do anything because it was wintertime, but he was just giving us a little insight of what's coming. Maybe I'm confused with another person.
I don't remember seeing Rex.
I mean, if they're concerned about people building, somebody's going to build on this property, and that's going to be right in front of you.
No, they were concerned about building right in front of it.
Oh, right here.
Over that, which was three acres, and a tennis court over in there, right, directly in front of them. The three acres will be a little bit off to the side.
Right, they have the tennis court, they have the pond.
Yeah.
And then they have the entrance into Crookshank's property, right at the end.
I mean, the concern is just that, we know it's buildable.
Right.
You're familiar with it.
Yes.
Yeah, let's see what Rex says about soils.
Right, make sure it's a buildable lot before they do that.
Yeah, we can't create an unbuildable lot.
Right, instead of creating any more work.
I mean, it could, it could be a cliff, you know, like we can't tell from looking at a two-dimensional thing. Yeah, but you're familiar with the property. Yeah, all right. We'll see what Rex says about soils.
Okay, so, too soon to schedule a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, too soon.
Too soon, yeah.
Yeah, they have to wait for soils.
In something, yeah. You never can tell. You saw what happens. You have concerned neighbors that we don't even know about.
There's nobody around. Oh, no, they don't, yeah. They have neighbors right here. The Giadessic house is right next to them.
Yeah. All right, next, we've got...
That's next.
Lot line adjustment? Is there someone here for them?
He's representing them as well.
Oh, you do?
Oh, okay, great. This is good.
There's the application.
Four six three five eight is, will be combined. Will be combined.
You better walk us through this.
Yeah, two point eight six, one point five five. So to make a larger lots.
They're, yeah, they're combining three lots and turning them into two.
Yeah, we're eliminating that middle lot.
So you're essentially just cutting the middle one in half and splitting it.
Yep. One's going one way, one's going the other. It's on Barley Road.
Okay.
What zone are we getting here?
One five, and it's going to be just under three.
Yep, yep.
This one's an easy one.
I don't have any, I don't have any follow-up questions.
I see no problem with this.
I also have the authorization.
Oh, from the client?
Do you have, do you have copies of these, Olivia?
This is the authorization from the clients, for him to represent him.
Please stick in your file. You can just, Olivia, just needs those. We don't need that.
This is very nice and neat.
Yeah.
One, two, three. I see no problem. Easy, yep. Okay.
Get up.
And the surveyor?
Yes.
Want to hand that back down to me?
We'll do this one. Good.
I make a motion?
I'm ready.
I make a motion that we approved the lot line adjustment that's presented to us?
Second.
And Olivia would do a roll call.
Third, Vivian, third.
Just ask us all, while we're.
Clifford Buffo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Cal?
Yes.
Do I have to say anything if they're not here? Okay, and, I'm sorry, Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wellness.
Wellness.
I have to leave.
Good evening, and, uh, I'd like to come back to you on it from Thomas R S, as you created direct management for the middle. We are asking for a change in use permit at fifty four Main Street, and we'll look at the restaurant to bring a pharmacy and home center to our community. Great architects have presented the site plan as you had on the question, and I think there was three main issues that you brought up. You encouraged us, one, to do a site plan of a parking. And, uh, and that was a very good exercise. We established that the usable retail space is sixteen hundred and twenty square feet. So, that sixteen hundred and twenty square feet reflects that we need eleven parking spaces. And as you also recommended, we're gonna be putting that in on our lease, and, uh, and that will be, two will be handicap, and nine will be regular. In total, we're, the site plan has parking for fifty, uh, spaces. So, we laid that out. The second thing that you asked us to do, um, was on our signage, especially in the front. So, Angie, as our architect, worked with Kirk Royer, and was thrilled on how this came out. And, uh, and I really made it.
Those look, those look very nice.
So, it's, it's a purple sign with green lettering?
It's going to be this one.
They're gonna, they're gonna use the white one.
In the dimensions that are on it.
And it's, it's labeled, it's forty by forty eight. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So, we used this pretty much the same footprint, but Kirk really now has signed it, and it's gonna be really a nice.
So, the sign is perpendicular to it, it looks very nice.
Yeah. How big is it, by the way?
Designed forty by forty eight.
Forty by forty eight.
Forty by forty eight, yeah.
Were they going to be right here?
And they.
So, that's about the same size, that's about the same size.
A M G I E. Okay.
It's just gonna be a nice addition to the town, like the A M sign, really nice.
Building exterior is gonna be the same as it is, as, same exterior color.
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the, the exterior has been more artistic, so, Angie had been working on, on the, uh, on the front, so, pretty much the, the changes would be to the front to make it more artistic.
I remember the question, wasn't there some type of firewall that had?
Yes, uh, uh, the architects have put in a double firewall that will separate, uh, from the kitchen that has been used, using the septic system throughout, and that will, firewalls will separate the pharmacy from that. There'll be no entrance from the bakery to our store, other than, you know.
And there will also be a fire rated ceiling.
Two ones, yeah.
And I believe he added structural beams, beams to support the upstairs as well.
Looks like a fair thorough response to our comments.
Yeah.
Questions?
No questions here.
Thank you very much for your input last time, because none of them, this is not my expertise, so I expect, I really did expect your comments.
Well, you're farther along in your own process as well.
Yeah, now we're ready to move on.
Yeah. I think we can set a public hearing for this, right?
Yeah.
Take a motion to set the public hearing.
Soon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we'll do it next month at, um, six forty five. Right?
When do you plan on starting?
Uh, summertime.
Good.
Opening day when? I, 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 I hope that it will be, you know, as long as the construction teams keeps us on their.
Agenda.
Agenda, yeah, yeah.
We need blood pressure medicine.
Are you shooting for the O in this year?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, for this year, and, uh, our model that we're using has been really well received. Up for Tammesville, Congressman Delgado's coming next Wednesday to see it as a model for rural America. And, uh, so we're very excited by bringing that same concept here, um, and, um, so, uh, we've worked real hard on the model, that's really important.
Sorry, before we get sidetracked, public hearing, six forty five, May eleventh.
This requires county referral, does she need to refer this to county? On Main Street?
Yeah.
County Road?
Yeah, yeah.
When's the next county planning board?
First.
The timing's bad.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Yeah. Right, I guess that'll be the fourth. Yeah. And then we're supposed to wait thirty days for them to review.
You gotta do it, you gotta do it.
Probably not gonna take them that long, so we do it.
Um, it's the first Wednesday, which is. May fourth. May fourth.
Yeah, so you gotta set it for the first meeting after the county planning is expected. Sorry.
Well, I, I, I mean, there's a few days between, we get it in, like, informal, point feedback from them, it's not.
We can't, because they're gonna make recommendations.
Oh, I see, so they'll.
Yeah.
It's, they're, they're gonna say approved.
No, there's county approval.
We can't say what they can say.
All right.
So, we come back here for another.
Yeah, it's gotta be, yeah, um, we'll set a tentative date for June then, I guess, right?
Yeah.
We'll have, we'll have heard that out, then there are thirty days, I'll be out, they'll have to have responded by then, uh, June eighth.
June eighth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, out of our hands.
June eighth at seven?
June eighth at, uh, we'll do six forty five, Olivia will.
Public hearing.
Olivia will do notices, yeah. Assuming there's nothing major, that could be the end of it for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it, right?
Yeah. Well, hang on, hang on, hang on.
It's already archer, jumping the gun.
Pretty obvious, having to go.
You know, we do, and we do get the advance.
Right, this is in ten days. No, I know. I guess we'll see what, we'll see what we got from county.
I can't see anything.
I'm sure that we told them they could come sooner. All right. Where does Al leave off? I mean.
I think we should, with the rail explorers?
Yeah.
Schedule it for our workshop, and let's just have a good kick down reading, you know?
Yeah, but they're just gonna charge, they're just gonna charge ahead and stuff, I mean, these are on the schedule.
Uh huh.
Like, so, I mean, I guess we have limited say over that aspect.
I think that's a key point, and some of the units are starting to get it, I think we need to be really crystal clear as to what are the limits of what we could do.
That's right.
We're influencing here, I mean, I don't, they have a deal with the county, they couldn't do, I think, they can, they want.
But I don't know how far that extends, as far as things like lighting, I mean, I think they're.
I don't think they can, Sam.
If we've got an ordinance that says you can't make noise after a certain hour, I don't think the county can override that, I would agree.
They can.
They can, that's right.
I mean, there is home.
As that's nine for us, right?
We have this, this deciding fact, that we can overrule the county, whatever they say.
But you're not gonna stop the rail.
Majority.
But we, but what we can, what we can ask for a site plan on is limited.
Right.
Like, when we approve them initially, we approve the buildings.
Correct, because that's what we had, jurist.
Yeah.
Because the concern of these neighbors is, like, they don't want it anymore.
Yeah, that can understand.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they want to go away.
They want it to go away, they're making money, they're, you know, they're saying all these things, I.
This is a big difference to me, though, from them being on Station Road in Phoenicia, to being on Route twenty eight with lights.
Yes.
I mean, all the time that I've been on these boards, the county said, no new improvements on Route twenty eight corridor, you know? Which is the reason why the brewery came into an existing building, you know?
Right.
The diner came into an existing building.
No golden arches allowed on Route twenty eight.
Yeah, I mean, they've been hammering on us for years with this.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't see anything wrong with what they're doing, I'm just opposed to the lighting, and I don't want this to be a hangout.
Yeah.
Where people are gonna come through the campfire.
That's why I ask them, now, entertainment, and if it's gonna start suddenly, there's, you know, a surprise, you know, light and music.
I understand why they're doing it, I have taken, I have taken the ride, and when they get all those rail cars at the end, it takes them a while, each day, they get the inflator underneath, they lift it up, they turn it around, so, you know, you do have time to kill.
Yeah, and they do charge quite a bit, so they have to give their riders something.
It's not cheap.
Yeah, I know. You know, down in Kingston, they do the Polar Express.
Right.
Did you ever see that? You ever go on it?
Yeah.
I mean, they got, they got whole little villages as the train passes, with all the lights and Christmas.
Yeah, behind the kennel.
Right, right.
You're, you're, sorry, you're welcome to stay if you want, but don't feel you're rude if you're leaving.
I was wondering if you were gonna sign the maps tonight, some other time, I can pick them up any time.
Um.
Put a signature.
Yeah, yeah, I can sign tonight.
So, if you don't have time.
No, I can, I'll, I'll sign those tonight, yeah.
Yeah, so, it is, it's a problem, I don't know.
Here's what my concern is, I'm thinking of the master plan. Again, again. Yeah, we're dealing with the diner, with cars parked on Route twenty eight.
Yep.
That's a horrendous mess.
Yeah, well, have they, I think they've stopped parking on twenty eight.
They stopped on twenty eight, they're not parking there anymore.
They were spoken to and they stopped, and the same with the brewery, they stopped.
And the brewery, and it's obvious to anybody that they're over their occupancy in the buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
And it just hasn't been enforced, and they're getting away with it, but I don't wanna see this become a hangout with a campfire, them not serving beverages, but people bringing their bottle of wine.
Sure.
And I have, I have to say, I've been in the car, and I could hear them hooting and hollering as that thing passes.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I'm in a closed car with the windows up, and I can hear them, they're, they're enjoying themselves, you know, they're taking the ride, they're having a few drinks, and they're, uh.
I mean, the shorter run, I think that's a great, knows a.
Yeah, except for that ten thirty run.
Well, then, yeah, they're making up for it by.
Right, they're putting another run on there.
I don't wanna see this blossom to be more than a rail explorers.
Right.
I don't want them to have food, campfires, alcohol, you know, people hanging out.
Well, if they're got, I mean, if they've got a fire pit going and there's a run getting back at midnight, like, you know, suddenly people are leaving at when, one?
People go on there with their kids.
Well, you'll get back on it, you're not gonna walk back to Phoenicia.
How many people?
No, I meant, I'm back at the, even back at the rail explorers, at their home base.
Yeah, but how many people are gonna be hanging around Phoenicia until ten thirty at night to get on this thing?
Have you met Brooklyn?
Well, if that's the only time open that they can book, there are people that have to wait a long time just to get a booking.
Well, they just have to cut down their bookings, that's what it is.
But I have to say, as far as the customer's concerned.
Yeah.
You know, they're waiting, they're, they're.
And they are out in, I've seen them in pouring rain.
Really?
With umbrellas and plastic ponchos on.
Yeah, that's on.
And it's because, and yelling, like you said. Yeah, and they're hooting and hollering, and plus, they go on that ride in that weather because they have to buy their tickets, I believe, online, and there's no refund.
Yeah, wait.
And no refund.
No, they're booked out, like, what, like, six months?
Yeah, they're like.
I think summer's, I think summer's probably done at this point.
Yeah, if you haven't booked by now, you're likely not.
At least a half a dozen times, I was driving down twenty eight, they yelled to me and waved.
Oh, yeah, they were, you know, they're waving, you know.
Anyway, we're just gonna have to go through a good list, put requirements on it, make sure everything is written down, not that they come back next year and say, no, no, we said this, you know?
But I mean, I remember that I even said, I know that the neighbors were upset about this, it was a matter of privacy. I know that, from last year, but before this even started.
I mean, they're talking about, um, planting stuff, um.
They want them to build a wall, that's what they want.
Did they build a section of fence? I didn't realize they'd done that.
It seems that one person.
The county put a couple of fences, a, a fence on, um, they, behind Andrews, Andrews Lane, yeah. There was two people there, they were up a little bit on Andrews Lane, but there was this direct sightline from their house. So, they put up a fence, but how high could you put up a fence?
Sure.
So, do you ever see the ones on the thruway, up and over it?
Yeah, it's a big, yeah.
Those are fences.
I mean, that's, that, it's like, maybe an eight foot fence at the most.
I mean, and that's for noise and privacy, those, those walls.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that took care of a little bit of the privacy, it didn't help much with the noise, it echoes around in that area.
Sure, it's metal, it's a metal.
And I understand, yeah, it's a horrible sound, but at night, the clinkety clank isn't gonna be, uh, by then, it's stopping on twenty eight.
I think it's great that they're not doing the night runs on Saturday and Friday and, and crossing Route twenty eight, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, because there's a lot of noise on Route twenty eight, there's tractor trailers, as you know, they pass right here, we can't hear ourselves. You know, so it's not just the clinkety clank, I mean, there's major traffic, it's a major thoroughfare.
I have a question, I, wasn't the, um, the tubing, wasn't that a, a drop off place, a, a pickup place for tubing, that over by the depot?
It was.
It was, yeah, one time, one time.
Now, I mean, who's to say they're not gonna do tubing again, is that gonna be an issue?
You have to have a lot of insurance to do tubing.
Vivian, we just have to make sure that what we agree with is written down.
Right.
And they can't make changes to it, you know? I mean, without coming back to us.
I mean, I, I've witnessed, I've stopped while they cross at night, and they have these helmets on, like miners, you know, with a light on it, running across the road, uh, so. So, the fact that they're not going across the road, I'm happy about that.
Yeah, they clearly are responding to what they heard.
Right.
A few months back. And they're probably asking for more than they'll say. Like, maybe they really can live without that next one.
Yeah.
Well, they already, I mean, it's an additional run, I mean.
Right, they're saying if they don't have.
They're trying to meet the needs of, I mean, that means they're full, and they want to book an additional.
They wouldn't be doing it if they didn't have the advantage, the market was telling them that they want these rights.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna have to.
And, you know, and it's a little upsetting that people from Woodland Valley came over here about this, I mean, really, that's way far away.
I can tell you what happened there, we have projects in this town, and people are watching their town change to become Brooklyn.
I know.
I mean, we have the diner, we have the brewery, we, that we were all forgetting about the restaurant, the girls go across the street.
The veil.
The veil, yeah, what's going on with that?
Down below, right?
Are they building, are they doing it there?
We have an awful lot of vehicles, that to Route twenty eight from the side roads and parking.
That's true, I see it, yeah.
Yeah, but it can handle it.
Yeah, it can handle it, but what is it gonna be, New York, Atlanta, I mean, just, that, these people are here because their areas are changing, Sam.
I, I, I get that, and believe me, my, my attitude towards noise is entirely different than it was a couple of years ago. I think we should not mitigate noise, I think we should preserve the silence, but. But that's a deal that's already been entered into, and I think if people really don't want it to go forward, they gotta get the county legislator and other people involved.
Right, that's what I said last time, when they first came to us, what was it, five years ago? I said to the people, it's unfortunate, but the county did not take you people into consideration, and they didn't.
So, what are, what are we asking them to come back?
The county's making money on us, it's how it's the way it is. The county's renting them the parking, I mean...
They don't want to end.
And it's, and it's based on tourism, which is what our economy is based on.
Based on, yeah.
Um, so, we're asking them to come back, right?
Uh huh.
For, for the lighting, right?
And that deck.
The deck?
The deck.
You heard what Rob said.
I think we should do a site plan on this.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So, both properties?
Yes, of course, they, yeah.
The depot and, and the, um, the depot and, um, Lower High Street, and, um...
And remember that the museum also benefits from them being there, because people that are waiting to go on one, they go in the museum and spend money.
Yeah.
So, the museum has a vested interest also.
Rob is right, once you have a permanent foundation, it's not a portable building anymore, he's a hundred percent right. I remember years ago with the dish antennas.
Yeah.
Put it down on a concrete sled, you needed a building, I think that's a permanent structure.
Yeah.
All right. So, the two emails, the two communications we've gotten from the people across from the place, they were positive.
There were three, one of them was a slightly altered version of the other.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but they also...
But that's the people that live on that road.
They live right there, so that's, I mean, that's great, whether, yeah, whether the other was...
So, they, they can benefit that way, which is good to your...
Sure, I mean, the whole town benefits from, you know, viable business in town. I think it's great that they're so successful, and, um, I mean, and they have, they have made attempts to mitigate. I think there's, they're, thank you. They're limited on what they can do, and I don't know if the people that live on Andrews Lane will ever be completely happy.
No.
But I think if they're gonna go for another five-year lease, and the implication is they want more than five years, because they gotta amortize this investment.
Sure.
I think if we sit, sit down with them again soon, this is when we make the big ask. And if we have to say, every home that wants it's gotta get a fence, not just visual, but something that cuts down the noise.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever we want, because basically, and I get it from the homeowners.
Sure.
They don't wanna know this thing is happening behind them.
Yeah.
Because it is constant all day.
Right.
Yeah, man, like...
But how would that look, though? A wall, it'll be a wall, that's...
Like you said, it could be a...
Like Albany.
Like Albany, yeah.
I think the grass might be, I mean, I, I don't, I think the tall grass might actually be a better solution. It grows, I mean, it grows pretty fast, it'll help with some noise, at least you're looking at something green.
You can buy a twenty-foot tree.
You don't need...
Well, the grass is thick, though.
Remember the walls up in Albany? The high levels walls are set by the stack from, from a eighteen-wheeler.
Yep.
Tractor trailer, because their exhaust is up high, that's where the noise is coming out. This noise is coming within eighteen inches of the ground, except for the people.
But all those houses are on hills.
They're up high.
They're up high, so to, yeah, to block the angle.
That's all you can do, is try to cut down the angle.
I, I mean...
And those walls are hideous.
Because if you make it out of, you know, if you make it out of solid timber, it's not that bad.
But they, they, like, basket weave them, and...
Yeah, but those are, yeah, and those are eighteen-twenty-five.
That's really expensive, too.
Yeah, it is, very expensive.
I mean, I don't know that they're gonna go for that, you know?
Because I remember when the first Anderson Resort opened on the other side, the one that burned out.
Yeah.
The old building.
Yeah, yeah.
They, why, they couldn't, they said the noise on twenty-eight from the tractor trailers and everything was disturbing the guests. But they built a burn and then put the trees on top of it.
Right.
Which is still there.
Right, and they had a lot of real estate to work with, though, they don't have that kind of depth.
But all the other things that he mentioned, you know, tightening the gas between the tracks, you know, tracks get welded. It's expensive, but there's nothing to stop them from welding these tracks together. At some point, I know you have to have an expansion joint, really.
I don't, I don't know.
And with the urethane wheels, and getting the ties, and then the only other thing is they could enforce, uh, the behavior. You know, the, the kids who run in riots say, folks, when we get to this stretch, this is the quiet stretch.
They, I mean, they said they do, yeah.
But then on the Route twenty-eight, I assume they're not going to be...
Who cares on Route twenty-eight, they're making noise when they're crossing.
Well, they think that the people across the street from the depot are gonna be disturbed.
They weren't, I mean, they weren't, they weren't here.
They weren't here, there's that A-frame house and, uh, on the horse.
I mean, some, I mean, yeah.
Mr. Ecker has a house across from me.
Yeah.
I can't think of anyone.
Is he local? Does he live here?
I just, I want to be clear when I say who cares, I mean, they're crossing Route twenty-eight, and they're being friendly, and they're waving to people.
I mean, that's a spot, yeah, I mean, it's, twenty-eight's loud already.
It's very loud, and people being engaged, and they're waving, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, the brewery, there's a diner, there's people, there's people noise there.
That's right. I wouldn't want them boopin' and hollering behind somebody's home. Twenty-eight, I think, is a different matter.
Because there's nothing really on that side, even coming out of High Street, there's no houses.
No, no, the only house is, was set way back, and that's gonna become the veil.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
All right, we'll see.
All right, I think we're done.
For clarity's sake, all that they've dropped off to the Building Department for Mount Trump is just an application to run the VVA thing, build the deck.
A building, a building permit application.
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
And all I've got based on that to tell them is, is I prefer them to the zoning board. Prevariance is for their fence height, for their deck.
So, then Donna's gonna refer them to the planning board?
That's what I'm asking, they need to be referred to the planning board and whoever wants.
It sounded like, it sounded like Rob's not giving them the deck.
Yeah, they need to...
I don't think that they, even in a perfect world, they're, where they wanna build that deck.
They wanna, no, as soon as I said, they can't, yeah, that's, that bank's like, that bank's so close because it caved in.
Yeah. And they don't cave in again.
So far, I've only referred to them as EVA prevariances for the fence, in a sense. If you, if they need to be referred to the planning board.
Yes.
Yes, for cycling or anything?
Yes.
I will call them tomorrow.
Thank you, Grace.
All right.
I'm reading Arts Mind, so moved.
I always, I always need a fifteen-minute warning.
What is this?
So, it's, so, it's, I'm reading Arts Mind, so moved. How's your wrist?
His wellness.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting, which is what we're referring to?
Aye.
Aye. I'm not sure.
I, I'm not sure.
It was a good morning here, it was a good morning here.
Whenever I open the doors, though, all that's in here is the traffic. And I don't have, even if I look, the windows back here, it's still really loud.
Yeah.
Or lower gets louder.
I don't think we've been... You are.
You know me, I'm great.
Grace.
I sat here for like, you were learning, I haven't met Olivia.
Olivia, I haven't, Grace, I haven't seen you in a month, so...
Well, because Sarah came to save you.
Ah...
Then Sarah looked at me.
Olivia's gonna be our secretary and, uh, Building Department Secretary.
Cool.
Great.
Well, happy Easter.
You too.
You too.
As well as, uh, yeah, as well as it could, I think.
Shut that off.
Good night, good night, Grace. Thank you so much, good night, Vivian, good night, Ellen, Doran.
Good night.